I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Wiggins.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Wallstrom.
Here.
And Councilmember Hetteke.
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask you all to stand for the invocation, which will be led by Father Mark Maxson from St. Malakis. And after that, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
We ask God's blessing upon this public meeting, but also we ask blessing upon your city council and all those in government. We pray, blessed are you, Lord, God of mercy, who through your son, Ailish Martlos, example of charity and the great commandment of love for one another, send down your blessing upon these your servants who so generously devote themselves to help others when they are called in times of need and will faithfully serve you and their neighbor. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through your authority has rightly administered laws our enacted and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit the counsel of fortitude of this city government. May they always seek the ways of righteousness, justice and mercy and that they may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our community. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
At this time... Ms. Mayor, I have a procedural point of order, please.
Yes, sir.
The point of order is that the agenda that's been presented tonight is out of order from our typical agenda. I've researched back in history as far as I felt sufficient, 15 or so meetings. And we typically have the consent agenda and the opportunity for public comment at the immediate front of every agenda that I was able to research. Tonight, we have been presented with something that is out of order. I would request that we put this agenda item and this agenda in order as we have typically seen in the past.
There's nothing. I'm sorry.
No, well, I was just gonna say, we can do either or. The only reason we put it in this order was in the hopes that you would select a fifth council member so all five council members could be voting on the agenda items. But it's certainly your pleasure.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I like it the way it is.
Anyone else?
I would like a change to the original format that we've had for the last 10 to 15 years.
I think it's a little confusing to change it right like that. You know, it doesn't seem to me that...
Can you speak up, please?
I'm sorry. It doesn't seem to me that putting, having it the way it was is gonna make anything go any faster or any better.
Is there a motion to change the order?
I'll make the motion to change the agenda back to the original order as we've seen in the past.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Stays.
The motion fails.
Yes. Stays the way it is.
Okay, I would like to appeal the decision of the chair. This is a, this is a very interesting topic. I don't know why we have allowed an agenda to be presented out of order from every other agenda that has been presented thus far since I've been a seated council member or anybody else. And again, I've gone back through a tremendous number of agendas. There's no need, no reason, to change that. And I appeal the decision that's been made under the Roberts rules of order.
Do you have a reason that you might be able to convince the other two that you're correct? I haven't heard any reason yet.
The reason is, you typically have the consent agenda and the opportunity for the public to speak.
Not when someone's being sworn in or someone's been elected. It's always, it always comes first.
Well, we haven't got either one of those tonight. We're working towards that.
We're trying to get it, we're not letting it.
So, well, no, 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 no. We're going... The reason is, it is out of order from what is typically presented.
It's not out of order.
It is completely out of order.
Is there a good reason why you want to speak?
There is a reason. It is out of order from what the general public and the citizens of this community are used to seeing.
About the minutes that are proved that haven't been voted on?
Pardon me?
About the minutes that are proved in the first place haven't been authorized yet?
Doesn't matter. We're trying to get a person elected, seated. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You've already had a motion?
Yes, sir. I, we're going to move on.
We can move on, yes.
Thank you.
But if you read questions from the floor like this gentleman on purpose?
No, not, well, that's up to the mayor.
No.
We both had a little private conversation and we didn't hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't you hear?
Anything.
Oh, I don't know what to tell you. The motion was made and it lost.
Right, but you had a private conversation with a guy in black shirt here.
No, no, I had no private conversation.
Right here in the front row.
Oh, yeah. Why don't you want to speak up on that?
Well, no, is it open to the floor? If you allow him to question, is it open to the floor?
No, we're going to move on, please.
Oh, they can choose. Okay, that's fine.
The Tehachapi City Council will appoint one member to the city council to fill the vacancy created by the passing of Mayor Ed Grimes on May 21st, 2018. This appointment will expire following the November 18th election. We've received several applications and I'm just going to go in order as they're listed. And if I call your name and you would like to come up and address the council, please do so. The first one is Brian X. Scott.
Yes, ma'am, I would like to. I've looked over the applications of all the other people being considered. There's eight of us in total. And I ranked them in order of qualifications. And I came in number eight. But, what I think is a salient consideration tonight is whoever is chosen and is seated will have the advantage of incumbency come November. And I think that makes this inappropriate. So I think you ought to choose the one and only applicant who's promised not to run for reelection in November.
Thank you. Mariana Teal.
Good evening. My name is Mariana Teal and I live at 909 Cappy Lane. For the last four years, I've been on the planning commission. And I have been, also served on the city council for 10 years. And from 2002 and 2004, I served as mayor. I have the experience to start immediately. I know the Brown Act. I've served on the current county air commission board. I've served on the current county waste management program. And I also was on the airport commissioner, commission when I first started. So, that tells a little bit about my experience. By profession, I am a registered nurse and have been a registered nurse for 40 years and am now retired. I worked at Tehachapi Hospital for 20 years and worked out of the prison for another 20 years. So I've had a wide, really a wide exposure to many administrative issues. My education adds to my qualifications. I have a master's in business. I have an MBA. And I also have, and I have a masters also. I have a sincere interest to serve my community and hopefully the council will appoint me because I do believe that I do have the qualifications, the experience and the sincere honesty to serve. Thank you.
Carl Garrick.
For the record, my name is Carl Garrick. I live in 702 Adida Drive. And our office and store is at 211 South Curry. You guys have seen me up here many times. I'm not a stranger to any of you. The least one that I know of least is, is that Ken? You, I know you the least of anybody. The rest of I've known you for, what, the four years that I've lived here. I am not running for city council in November. Ah, okay. Mr. Grimes and I worked together at the institution. I'm retired from the institution. I've served on the hospital board, so I know the Brown Act. And I will serve only to fill Mr. Grimes' seat until November, at which time you have a lot of very, very educated and qualified applicants to consider. So, with that, you guys know me. I've been a Mount Festival chairman for, what, 21, 25 years. I'm a member of the Tehachapi Police Foundation. I also am a member of other organizations in town. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Michael R. Davies.
Good evening, council. I'd like to appreciate the time to stand before you and introduce yourself. My name is Michael Davies. I live at 1149 Redwood Court. I've been part of the Tehachapi area for almost 40 years. I met this young lady down in Bakersfield and I followed her back up to Tehachapi. And this Thursday will be our 38th wedding anniversary. I have not been involved in politics at all. I'm one that sits on the sideline and complains. When I turned 18, my father told me that if I don't vote, I can't complain. Well, I have voted. So, I want to do something about it. I have five grandchildren that live in this town now. I've raised three of my daughters that grew, grew up here, went to the school district. And now I have five grandchildren and I want to be a part of their lives. I don't understand all that goes on, but I've been reading three to four hours every night about everything that goes on. I've watched every YouTube video I can possibly think of. I've worked for RSI Consulting for 30 years. Worked way up, way up from a driver to the operations manager. I oversee 38 million gallons of gasoline this year that we will deliver to 80 gas stations. I have two convenience stores that I oversee. I deal with the public on a daily manner. I deal with 80 different gas station owners. So I have a lot of different ethics that I, ethical people that I deal with. Price of gas goes up, I'm the hated guy in the world. Price goes down, they still don't call me. I've been official with the Tehachapi Valley Parks and Rec now for almost 30 years. I've read basketball. I'm one of my third generation of basketball. This year will be my 29th year doing softball. I do have thick skin. Question is, can I bring a whistle when I'm appointed to the council? I have read a lot of people. I know a lot of people on the board. I've known everybody. I don't think I've met, I've met Ken, but I have not personally worked with him. I just want to see this city grow and I want to do what's right. I appreciate the opportunity to get up here and serve and I appreciate everything that you guys have done in the past. And I look forward to making it even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim E. Nixon.
Good evening, Mayor Proton Wiggins and city council. I'm Kim Nixon. You all know who I am. And I'm excited that for our little town that we've had such a good group of applicants for an open seat tonight for you to consider. I've called Tehachapi home for the last 32 years. And out of that 32 years, most of the time I have spent serving either the school district or the city. I served as a planning commissioner for two stints, a total of about 15 years. And I've served on the city council previously for just over five years. I was appointed for a short term and then was elected in 2012. I know that there has been some comment that the voters need to have the right to choose who fills the seat. Well, in the last election, Mayor, former Mayor Grimes and Ken Hetteke got the two most votes. I was the third recipient of the most votes, with just 80 votes less than Councilman Hetteke. So, if, I know that you're not mandated to do that, but if you're concerned about what the people voted for, I would be the next person in line to fill that seat until the November election. And that way the people have a say in who sits in that seat. I can hit the brown running. I am committed to spend the time and do the work, ask the hard questions and to serve respectfully with the other council members. I love Tehachapi. I'm proud to call Tehachapi my home. And I would welcome the opportunity to serve and continue the important work that the council and the city have accomplished in previous years and in the last two years. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susan Schuler.
Good evening. My name is Susan Schuler and I am the current city treasurer. I have lived in the greater Tehachapi Valley since 2014 and in the city since 2017. First, I want to thank you all for your service, your dedication and your commitment to the residents of Tehachapi. Because of your leadership, your vision and oversight, Tehachapi is the jewel that it is. And for that, I am grateful. As I stated in my application, I am passionate about building a strong and healthy community. Tehachapi is a wonderful place to live, work and raise a family. And I want to ensure that our city continues to grow and prosper for many generations. To do this, I believe we need to ensure our vital enterprise zones, trash, water, sewer and the airport are managed responsibly. We need to ensure our commercial areas, such as the Tucker Road Corridor and downtown, remain healthy and thriving. We need to ensure that all of our revitalization plans, whether residential or commercial, provide the most efficient use of tax dollars. And we need to continue partnering with local associations, such as the Economic Development Council and the Chamber of Commerce to help our local businesses prosper. And we need to attract new businesses to contribute to our community and to provide a living wage for our residents. I am excited for this opportunity to apply for the appointment to the city council and to be part of the shared vision that the council and city staff are striving towards. Thank you.
Thank you. James Clinton Davies.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank all of you for coming to this meeting. This is like a community, you know, in action, democracy in action. And it's not, the reason I'm up here is for you guys. I kind of feel ashamed of me distressing the city council, not addressing you and what concerns you, but I'm just gonna go forward. I'm a new person in this town. Most of you don't know me. And that's probably why I might be the best pick. I have no biases. I have no, you know, deep friendships with anybody in the city government or anything like that. I'm probably the wild card. You'll probably hate me when I'm done, but I'll only be here for, you know, two months. And I plan to re-election on, for this seat. Geez, I mean, you know, I just want to offer my service to the community. One of the most important issues to me, I think it is to a lot of people, is this hospital. I don't understand. I've lived here two years and this thing, there's nothing happening there. We are totally underserved in our community. And my parents are now close to retirement. The baby boomers are going into retirement. And we have subpar medical facilities in our valley. It's just totally unacceptable. And that's the issue I'm gonna fight for. Everything else, I will vote to where I think the will of the people will vote. And so my name's Clint Davies and I see you again for you. Thank you.
Thank you. James D. McDaniel.
I'm glad to be here. Second, second thing is, my experience in city government is when I dared to stand here, I was appointed by the mayor and city council. On the city retirement board, responsibility of volunteering around the city's hundreds of people made by the retirement fund passed and all benefits from the police officers in the city. Then I was appointed to the Ruby N. Flea Hall of Science of the Plantarian in Valparaiso to clean that up. And then I did some other things. But I've lived down there for a long time. Moving up here, this is my 10th year doing Wheels on Wheels. This is my chairman and the cancer prospecting information group of Tehachapi. And I just try to give to others more than to myself. I've been there, you know, when I was 20, I was more of a taker. And when I was 30, I was more of a taker. As you get older, you understand that's not the way life is. You have to care more for other people than for yourself and put yourself in their shoes. And to me, that's much more important. And I'm here because I thought, well, you know, gee whiz, you know, I have a lot of business background. I've run a lot of companies. And I just thought, shucks, you know, maybe I could help with my background in the city government, my experience in dealing with other organizations and help the city of Tehachapi or business-minded way in this organization create the right atmosphere and climate for the city's growth. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain nominations from the city council. We do not have to second the nomination. So, what's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I will just say that with the applause meter, it sounds like anyone who gets on will be accepted. And I think anyone who doesn't get on, don't feel bad. Careful what you wish for. You know, as for six months, okay? It sounds like everyone's positive. Ms. Dixon did, Ms. Dixon did say that she was the most recent in an election, very narrow margin, third place. So, I think that does speak for the people most recently and maybe that makes the most sense. I don't know. So, we do need to reach some kind of either three or hopefully consensus with an individual. I'll nominate Kim Nixon.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? All right. All in favor of Kim Nixon, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Okay. Moving along. Are there any other nominations? Are you gonna nominate anyone else?
This is a mockery. You should be ashamed of yourself.
We don't need comments from any of you.
No, we're good.
You know what? Carl Garrick has volunteered in this area for a long, long time. You know, I've seen him after festivals, picking up barricades when everyone's gone home. You know, picking up trash when everyone else has left. Maybe we could agree on Carl. I would nominate Carl Garrick.
Any other nominations? All in favor of Carl Garrick, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So, since you two are voting no, is there anyone that you wish to nominate that we could agree on?
Not me.
Huh?
Not me.
Not you?
Not at this time for me either.
Okay. So, no matter how many we nominate, you're not, you're...
Well, let's just keep going down the list.
All right.
Michael Davies has been a volunteer in this community for years. I will nominate Michael Davies.
Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
We both said opposed. I think we, we're at a stalemate.
No.
All right. No. Pardon?
We've got five more.
All right. Go ahead.
James Davies.
Susan Schuler, next on the list.
Any other nominations?
Oh, I missed it. I'm sorry.
All in favor for Susan Schuler, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I forgot the first two on the list. Brian Scott.
Okay. Brian Scott's been nominated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Mariana Teal.
All in favor of Mariana Teal, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Did you vote, Mr. Wallstrom?
Yes, ma'am, opposed.
Thank you. Okay.
James Clinton Davies, nominated.
James Clinton Davies has been nominated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
And what, we have one left? James D. Michael McDaniel.
McDaniel, okay. All in favor of James D. McDaniel, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No. It wasn't aye. Did you say aye?
No.
Oh. I thought, I thought you were, okay.
All right, opposed?
Opposed.
All right.
So is that everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Because of this, because the council was unable to come to a consensus, the position will stay vacant until the November election. Is that correct?
You could re-advertise. We could bring it back. It's a good option.
Does anybody want to re-advertise?
I don't live in the city, but neither do you, Ken, so I'd like to consider. My name's Nikki Cummings. I live, I can throw a stone at the city if I miss. I might do.
No, no.
No, not, not right now.
You need to get order.
Not until we, not...
You need some order?
Need some order.
No.
Let's move on with this.
We're going to move on. We, we're not able to come to a consensus. I don't believe anyone wants to re-advertise. So at this point, at this point, right now, the position will stay vacant until the November election when and at large position will be advertised for the vacancy of Mayor Grimes. Yes, sir?
Can I withdraw my candidacy and throw my support to the gentleman sitting at the end of the floor?
No. No. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter what all of you do. The council has voted, we're done. We're, we're moving on.[1639.31] Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. Are there any items that the audience would like to remove from the consent agenda? Are there any items that the council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item number four, number eight, number 11.
Four, eight, and 11, is that it?
That is correct.
Anyone else?
Motion to approve consent with items four, eight, and 11 removed.
Do I have a second? All second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Okay. Audience oral and written communications. The city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We request that this be utilized in a positive and constructive manner, and we would like to remind you to please state your name and area of residence, and I'd like to remind you that you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Liz Fox. I live in 1240 Arabian Drive, and I ask to say this is the most disappointing meeting I've ever been to, but that's not what I'm here for. Over on Arabian Drive, this gentleman has bought something. It's called Oak Tree Village Specific Plan. Right now, the current zoning is .5 acres to five-acre ranches, in keeping with the ranches that are down below it. Arabian, Happaloo, Sub Burnett. We've had horses there for 35 years. He wants to put in a 20 to 30-acre continuing care community up to three stories high. We don't even have three-story-high buildings except for maybe up to down. Adult active, small-scale neighborhoods. I love it when they use the small-scale or, let's see, multifamily bowling. That means the burnouts. So in other words, they want to zone a megacity kind of right above us, looking down on the city with this three-story-high continuing care home, et cetera, et cetera. I have talked to, at this moment, I've only gotten to my three blocks, but here's a lot of our comments. Zoning change. The zoning change is incompatible with the residential estates allowing livestock. They were aware of their current zoning before they did their purchase. We only average spend more money per animal, adding to the sales tax and the revenue of the city. Horses cost a lot of money. They're not cheap. Neither are llamas or some of the other things we raise over there. It was mentioned that there are not many people that are looking for ranches. That's really untrue. We have good property values. For that matter, one time, we only had sales because people died. So our houses don't come up very often. My last appraiser told me that the average length there was 25 to 30 years, therefore making that entire area unavailable for constant sales. Actually, we do need more ranches because we've shoved them all the Cummings Valley. Not everyone wants to go to Bear Valley. Most, any medium of high density drives out ranches. Our places are unique because they're the only place in the city. They're near the rodeo grounds, and we can have livestock. I ride to the junior rodeo. On top of that, I personally think it will be a huge visual goal. Zoning is not a guarantee. Again, the man knew what he'd buy. So rezoning it from residential estates, which is what we look at on Mountain Meadows, nice open spaces, is very pretty compared to putting a huge bunch of, like a megacity there with three-story commercial, three-story nursing homes and everything else. My personal plan, and I'll be very, very honest about it, is that I plan on walking this entire city. While I'm doing so, there are certainly people that I am going to be very much in favor for, because they seem to share a like-mindedness with many of us that are actually here and want this beautiful country atmosphere, but city atmosphere, you know, we want the blend, like Norco. And then there are others that I will certainly be speaking against very strongly in their districts, as far as their voting patterns and other things that I have witnessed as long as I've been here. So the first thing is, I am going to make sure that I get a petition out there on every street in this entire area. I will go to everyone's district. And remember, there's four seats available. That means that I've got four different people. I can either be speaking for, and what do you want our city to look like, or against. And I think most people here know who I'm going to be speaking against. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you wish to comment on that now, or...
No, it's going through the public process. It'll go through planning commission.
Okay. All right. So, so watch that, and then when it comes to planning commission.
And Miss Fox spoke with Jay and I both.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We know where she stands.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
My name's Cora Schmidt. I live in the city. I just want to express my displeasure with a meeting that took place on June the 4th. It was one of the ugliest I have ever attended. Tehachapi residents were barely in attendance because most of the space for the public was occupied by out-of-town people. Tehachapi residents were in the adjoining hall, straining to listen and hear what was going on. I have good reason to believe that these people from out of town were invited by somebody. The National Roth Rifle Association members were easily identified because they carried NRA signs. These two people took over the major part of the meeting. We were not discussing the NRA or that amendment in one, in any manner, shape, or form. I want to read you a quote from a recent Time magazine. "A gun by its nature is a polarizing thing. A gun forces us to envision ourselves on either one end or the other of it. A gun is an equalizer, a tool, a symbol of liberty and power and slaughter and loss." This being the case, why would anyone invite the NRA to a meeting held for the purpose of coming to an amicable solution to some of the city's problems? As it happened, the California primary elections were here, were to be held the following day. I was happy to hear Carl Garrick remind everyone in attendance how easy it is to vote once preference. You may cast a vote by mail, as I had done days before the election, or you can vote at the polls in privacy without fear of intimidation from the NRA or anyone else. I do not believe that the main reason the NRA and others were here was to make sure all members of the council voted. I believe that they were here to try and intimidate the council, as well as maybe the voter at the polls. I'm making this statement to ask everyone in attendance not to invite outside people to participate in local decisions to the exclusion of Tehachapi's own population. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
City manager, how you doing?
Good, my residents.
I am Jim Jacobs.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to remind you to say your name, but then I cut you off. Go ahead.
Can I go now?
Yes, sir.
And residents.
My name is Jim Jacobs, and I'm the ride captain for the Pinkerton Riders in town. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here for our veterans at our local cemeteries. I'm from Reese Across America, and we're a 501(c)(3) group that raises funds to ensure that our veterans in our two cemeteries are honored with a wreath for Christmas time. And there's businesses here that I've dealt with, very willing to give. City Hall has been involved, so now I'm telling you, the council, to see if you'll step up and make a donation in support of veterans.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You want to now or later?
I'm veteran, I'll vote. This is fair, everybody here is telling.
Thank you for your service and the veterans as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Appreciate what you guys do.
Well, I don't have any cash.
I'll take a chair.
I'll get you out. He's going to put some in for me.
Thank you.
Fine. Fine. Yeah. Thank you.
That's for you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll get you.
Kind of like church, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right.
Somebody say amen!
Name, I'm a resident.
I know.
Okay, I'm finished, if you want to get on with your business.
Thank you. All right. As he's collecting, any other comments from the audience?
Yes? I'm sorry?
You're, you're fine. Any other comments?
I didn't know I was blocking that. I just wanted to comment, and I'm sure this has been checked out by you folks in the city council and with your city attorney. But has, have you always followed Robert's rules of order, one? And two, have you investigated, can you internally amend the bylaws so that you don't have this form situation popping up? I don't know how your situation is on the bylaws and stuff like that, but I've encountered this before in other organizations I've run into, and I'm sure they have, your attorney has explored this. But there should be a way, you know, to help this. Maybe in the future, you could have that extra person on the city council, so you never come up again. But I think it's a waste of your time and a citizen's time to come to a conclusion tonight. And that's just where I am on that, and I'm just hoping you have checked out the bylaws, and I'm sure you folks have, and you're diligent about that. It's a critical thing to do.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? If not, we're going to move on to number four, Mr. Hitke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question for the city attorney regarding the minutes from the June the 4th meeting. This was directly involving the discussion that we just addressed with filling the vacancy for Mr. Grimes. I would like to have your clarification on the vote that we took at that initial meeting. It was a two-to-two vote. Then a discussion started.
Which item are you talking about?
I'm talking, item number four on the minutes.
Okay, that says voluntary employee program?
Sorry. Item number four on the minutes from the June 4th meeting.
How about the minutes? I'm wondering...
You're on the special meeting. It's the next over, it's the regular meeting. There's two cents.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. And where, what part, item four?
Item four, and if you just go over to the right-hand column there, Tom.
Yeah, got it.
We had a two-to-two vote at the initial onset of that agenda item.
Okay.
A two-to-two vote is, in essence, a nullification.
Yeah, the motion that was made doesn't pass.
Correct. There was then further discussion that was started, and then there was a call for a second vote. That is very questionable on how we can go from a two-to-two, complete nullification of an agenda item, to then having council members readdress the matter and come back and, and make a motion to vote on it again.
Where does that say that? Actually, where is that in the minutes?
Over here on your right-hand side.
Yeah.
You can see there initially was a vote and it failed. And then they did, the discussion continued and a revote was conducted.
Okay.
And at that point, the motion was carried.
I think we violated some rules.
No, it didn't violate any rules. Why do you think you violated the rules?
Well, why do you think we didn't violate some rules?
Because you voted to, to send out the notice.
Okay, we, we voted two-to-two to stop the item. Sorry, it wasn't a stop, it was a nullification. It was an even vote.
Okay.
That kills the measure.
Well, you didn't, okay, we went ahead and, and we got the vote. You didn't object to it.
We had additional...
You, in fact, you participated in it.
I...
Well, here's another item, Ken. You just asked to do the very same thing at the beginning of the meeting. You had a motion, and it was two-to-two to change the agenda, correct?
Correct.
And then you just did what you're complaining about over here. You, you said, you, hang on. You challenged the two-to-two and wanted further discussion. You wanted an amendment to the ruling of the, of how we voted, and now you're asking us to do that, and you're saying this is wrong, but what you did today, which is the same thing, is correct.
And this is what's interesting, Phil. I thank you for bringing that point up, because if you go back and if you look at the video recording of the meeting, it's very clearly stated by Mr. Schroeder that the motion failed. It failed. So if you, if you intend on coming back with readdressing an item that you have declared failed, that has to be re-agendized.
No, it doesn't. It's on the agenda.
It is a dead moot point.
I'm sorry.
You yourself have said that it failed.
And we revoked it again, and you participated.
Well, I don't know how we can take a failed measure.
Why did you participate then? Why did you...
Do you recall what my vote was?
You should have objected then.
Yes, you should have objected then.
That we discussed it further.
Well, Mr. Schroeder, you have, you have, as the city attorney, you have said that the motion failed.
And it did.
Okay. That should have been the end of discussion.
It didn't. It wasn't, it wasn't the end of the discussion.
Well, it...
Thank God it was not.
Well...
At least we got off of that dime to come to this point, and now we can't even get someone to vote.
Well, this is what's interesting, because this is called a Tehachapi do-over. You know, the last time I checked, there wasn't a do-over process in the legal system. Well, and that's what we're doing. We're, we are, we are doing a huge injustice to the public for doing a do-over. So when you, as the city attorney, indicate that the measure has failed...
It failed.
Move on.
I'll indicate again.
Move on.
And then we went ahead and it got passed again.
Move on.
No, there's no move.
Move on. How can you fail it and then move?
Okay. Are you, are you sorry that you didn't get your way? Because that's what this sounds like.
No, it's, it's very interesting.
I'm sorry!
It's interesting that we've taken a philosophy of, when we vote on something, we then come back and talk about it after, after we voted on it, and then we, after it's, the measure is either passed or failed, then we start all over again.
Like you did today.
May I, may I?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In the context of that meeting, we were discussing how to get past two-to-two votes.
Yes.
And, and then we, we failed to even advertise to get a fifth board member, a fifth councilman. So we just, we discussed it a little, little further, and Mr. Wallstrom said, well, let's go ahead and at least advertise.
Yeah.
We weren't saying we're going to do anything, and tonight, obviously, we didn't.
We didn't.
But we agreed to go ahead after further discussion, just to get off the dime. This isn't like, we wanted to spend a million dollars and then we didn't, it failed, and we... But on any item, if you've got enough of the, of the council willing to discuss it again and reconsider, you could do that on, on any item, correct? On any item, not just that one. So I'm not sure, well, this is just a complete disruption, but here we are at two-to-two, and hopefully we can get some things passed and some things have gone 4-0, and I'm hoping we can, we can get some...
Move forward.
Move forward, so...
Believe me, the city would like you to move forward.
Let's, let's try to, let's try to do the people's business up here. That's what we're here to do, so...
All right. Thank you.
So a motion to approve the minutes, or item number four on this agenda, which is the...
Yes.
The minutes for the...
June 4th.
June 4th meeting.
Do I have a second? All second the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
No, wait a second. Do we just not, uh...
We did not approve the minutes.
I oppose.
I, point of order to our attorney, when you don't approve minutes, how does that stand?
They're not approved.
So...
They're, they're obstructing, or are they, if they personally object?
I beg your pardon. That is not an appropriate term.
I'm talking to, I'm asking...
We are not obstructing.
Excuse me.
You don't have a flip.
Mr...
There aren't two of them.
Please go ahead.
I don't know of anything easier than approving the minutes.
Yeah.
I've never, I've never seen the minutes not approved in 25 years here.
I've never seen them in 32 years.
Exactly. And I'd add, I've, I've been a journalist on and off since 1968. Never seen that anywhere, but, you know, we're the first. All right. So they were just...
What do we do with that?
Well...
What are the legal implications of that?
Well, one approach is, you can amend the minutes if Mr. Hitke would like to amend them, or at least have a, have a motion to amend them, if that'll get them approved.
Would you care to entertain that?
Now, it has to be an appropriate amendment.
Madam Mayor, you've heard my vote.
Okay, fine.
If you'd like to amend them, then present it.
So the minutes will-
Councilmember Wallstrom, is there any way that you could go forward with approving if there's anything removed from those minutes to be taken up later, that item four?
According to what I could read from Robert's Rules of Order, I think Ken's right.
Okay, with the-
I'm not saying that I am, but this is what I've been reading.
Yeah.
And-
Okay, it sounds like a point of contention is the item four from June fourth. So if we remove that item from the minutes, would you be willing to approve the balance of those minutes, the business of the city? Because the item of contention was item four on those minutes. And we could readdress it later or just not approve that part of the minutes? Would you be willing to do that?
Okay, what part are you speaking about?
He had an issue with item four of the June fourth minutes where we had, we had a two to two vote to go publicly to advertise. Then we-
And we did.
We redid it and went ahead and advertised. So if we, can we at least approve the minutes with that item removed? That would be my motion.
No, the advertising was fine. That's exactly what we, what I put out. Is that we advertised for candidates to see who we could get and we couldn't get.
Right.
Who we can live with, who we can't live with.
So is there anything on the-
Mr. Smith, if you would like to present something, please do it.
Okay, my thing is this, Dennis, can you, is there anything on the minutes of June fourth that we could remove so that we could approve the business, the rest of the business of the city that took place?
If I may?
Yes.
The minutes are a representation of the accurate record taken by the clerk of the actions that were taken at the meeting.
Yes.
You can't change what the action was at the meeting. You're only approving the fact that that action was taken at the meeting, wrong or right, you're approving the fact that that was the action taken.
Okay, now, my only problem with that is that I think, I think that the action wasn't correct. I don't think it was correct.
Okay, the minutes-
Are we allowed to approve, are we allowed to approve the minutes that are an accurate record of what happened with that item removed for future approval?
The council decides what was accurate. So if you want to remove item four, I don't see a legal problem with it. If you were going to appoint a council member tonight, then there wouldn't be a problem because part of that process was the notice.
I see.
But you didn't appoint a council member tonight. So if you remove that as if it never happened, then legally, it's not a problem.
Well, I would like to remove it for approval on those minutes, leaving it there for future approval. You can't do that?
Well, I'm not aware of, I suppose we could try that.
I would, I suggest we move on.
Okay.
The minutes were not approved. In the next millennium, probably nothing will happen because of that.
Okay, let's move on then.
So, we're moving on. Number five, the Tehachapi City Council will appoint two members to the City of Tehachapi Planning Commission to fill the vacancies created by Mariana Teal and David Butler's expiration of terms on June 30th. And we have three applicants. David Butler, would you like to address the council?
Yes, ma'am. David Butler, 711 Bretwood Drive. I've been on the planning commission. I've enjoyed it. We've accomplished a lot. We've learned a lot as far as how our planning goes and I'd just like to be a representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariana Teal?
My name is Mariana Teal. I'd be very honored to continue staying on the planning commission.
Thank you. Linda Hollingsworth? Sorry.
My name is Linda Hollingsworth. I live at 330 West D Street and I submitted an application for the planning commission. My background is, I've lived in the city since 2007. Love the city. Love all of the things that I see changing. I think we're doing some really nice things, a nice direction that we're going. My background is in public sector for the last 11 years. And in that capacity as finance director and, as finance director and as interim city manager for a period of time, I've had an opportunity to work with planning commission, development directors, and councils. And I feel like that gives me a background that would allow me to participate in the planning commission and be able to be a productive member of that commission. I know you have two incumbents and they bring skills, knowledge, history, and a desire to serve. What I'm asking you to do is to consider providing that opportunity to someone else.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a nomination, we'll do them one at a time, for one member of the planning commission. Do I have any nominations?
Linda Hollingsworth. Linda Hollingsworth?
Linda Hollingsworth. Do I have any other nominations?
Mariana Teal.
All right, all in favor of-
Other?
No, we can't do it that way, can we?
Well, are there any other nominations?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, just in case.
Yeah, okay, I apologize. Are there any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of-
Now, is this for both seats or just for one?
No, just one seat. We're just voting one at a time.
Okay.
For the first seat, all in favor of Linda Hollingsworth, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four oh. Write that down. Congratulations, Mr. Wallstrom. For the second position, I'll entertain a nomination.
Mariana Teal.
Mariana Teal. Do I have another nomination? All in favor of Mariana Teal, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. David Butler?
I'll nominate David Butler.
Any other nominations? All in favor of David Butler, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we have one, one person who was appointed, and now what do we do, sir?
You got, you went as far as you could go.
Okay.
So I guess we'll have to wait till November when we get a fifth person on the council to be able to appoint a full planning commission. So I hope the planning commission's folks that are there can maintain a quorum to do the city's business. It really hamstrings us when we're at an impasse situation. So please apply again or if anyone else wants to apply, so.
This entire thing is a line down.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Number eight, annual placement of liens for the abatement of certain weeds and rubbish. City clerk?
Are there any questions with this, Mr. Hettie?
Yeah, I noticed that we've got, in some cases, APN numbers, in other cases, addresses. I know that we've discussed this in the past. I think it would be a very beneficial convenience to the council if we had all addresses associated with the abatement filings.
For vacant lots, there are oftentimes no address with an APN, that's why. And most of the time with weed abatement, it is a vacant lot.
And we chatted about that and discussed that at a previous meeting also. It is beneficial to the citizens to understand, and I'm not against the abatement, it is beneficial if our citizens understand whose vacant lots are getting-
That one for the public file, too.
Yes. That was an oversight, Mr. Hettie. We actually caught it this morning in staff meeting. So I had a map printed up to have all of the APNs for each of the weed abatements on there.
Super. Great, thank you, chief. If anybody in the public would like to see what lots are being abated and the city is charging for the services to clean up those lots, please-
I've seen that in a public finding.
Fantastic. Please get a copy of that. I think it's beneficial that we all understand that the chief and Officer Price are doing a fantastic job regarding the abatement process. There are certain situations that come up where we have to have our folks go out and take action on cleaning up vacant houses, vacant lots, et cetera, et cetera. And if you are unclear on how that works or where those locations are, please take a look at this. And I have nothing more, Ashley, so we can go ahead and process that.
I'll entertain a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Well, I didn't make one, I just- Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
My name is Carl. Okay, Ken, I own a few pieces of property. Vacant lots do not have an address issued by the post office until a resident or a structure, a building permit is issued for that vacant lot. So as long as it's vacant, there is, post office does not issue an address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
I may have a motion.
All right, and you've seconded?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show the vote was four oh. Number 11, Mr. Hettie.
Yeah, the only question I've got about number 11, we had the matrix that was provided with all of the titles, the positions, and the salaries associated with public employees. Are there any new titles or positions that are now included in that matrix that we did not have in the past? And if there are any new positions or titles, if we could just have a brief summary of what those are?
So, so we do not have any new positions. We are, we have these, okay, there are three new positions for these part-time code enforcement. We already have full-time, but it's just we're creating part-time positions.
Okay.
So we already have that position. The second position is part-time analyst. We do have analyst positions, but we're just creating part-time positions.
Okay.
And third one is administrative analyst, that we used to have it in our list, but because it was vacant, we removed it, but we're bringing it back.
Great. Thank you, Hannah. And I have no other questions.
All right, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the salary plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show the vote was four oh. Airport manager report?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Protem and Council. For you is a memorandum of understanding between the Airport Enterprise Fund and the Wastewater Utility Fund. Since the early 1990s, the city's wastewater department has used a large portion of the north side of the city's airport for reclamation purposes. It's encumbered by a water discharge permit that's issued by the State Water Recess Control Board for the disposal of treated effluent. The wastewater department has paid rent to the city-owned airport in the amount of $30,000 annually. As these are both city departments, we've never had an official memorandum in place. That being said, as you're all aware, in May of 2017, the FAA conducted a land use inspection of the Tehachapi Airport. This was a result of complaints by airport tenants alleging portions of the airfield were being used for non-aeronomical purposes. The inspection resulted in a letter recommending the establishment of interdepartmental agreements and memorandum of understanding between city departments and the airport department for the city's non-aeronomical uses of the airport land and facilities. These MOUs were to include lease rates based on the current fair market value and the allowance for periodic rental rate adjustments. Following their recommendation, we reached up several companies for quotes to determine the current fair market value. We received one response, which was from Mary Manhurst and Associates, and they were subsequently hired. Their assessment looked at both the developed areas of land, which is the land with infrastructure in place to potentially conduct reclamation operations, doesn't mean we are currently using it for those purposes, and undeveloped areas, which is land without the infrastructure to conduct those operations. So it was determined that the fair market value of the property in its present condition was as follows. So for the developed area, it's $200 per acre per year. For the undeveloped area, $15 per acre per year, with a total fair market value for an annual lease of $12,685. With the attached MOU, it also includes a CPI increase, which would be annual. So what this would do, the fiscal impact, is a $17,315 reduction in revenue to the Airport Enterprise Fund and a $17,315 reduction in expense annually to the Water Utility Enterprise Fund. So we would recommend that you approve the MOU between the Airport Enterprise Fund and the Wastewater Utility Enterprise Fund and authorize the city manager and mayor Protem to sign.
Thank you. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes?
What part? Do the audience first then we should do it.
Audience have any questions concerning this?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I want to know-
I need your name and-
My name is Michael Bigley.
And your area of residence. Thank you.
I represent accountability in government. And I'd just like to know is, how do you consider those two separate entities when you have the deputy clerk as the city, as the airport manager, addressing the city council? I can see it's all one. I don't see any separate entity here, so I don't see how they can make recommendation like that. I see it as a conflict of interest, so.
Yes.
That was the FAA's recommendation. I'm not talking about the FAA.
Yeah, I am, they're the ones that made the recommendation and they, they're the ones that have the somewhat of that control there.
They recommended that the two entities have the same city people as-
Internal memo.
In the airport.
Yes.
Internal MOUs, that's correct.
Yes. I see it as a conflict of interest.
Well, we didn't have it that way originally. They wanted it that way, so that's what I said.
Originally, it wasn't a conflict of interest, but it is now.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Comments from the council?
I've got one. Does anybody know how we came up with $30,000 to begin with?
Yeah, that, good question. It's just historic. It was actually $50,000 some 20 years ago and reduced to $30,000 by somebody at some point. But this is the appraised value, so this is the appropriate value of the property today.
And my second question would be, do we have any thought whatsoever of reimbursement for the overcharging was what the-
Well, we had that conversation, actually. And it's kind of a moot point because the Airport Enterprise Fund is in the red every year, as you know. The general fund subsidizes that enterprise fund. So the general fund would be paying on behalf of the Airport Enterprise Fund the wastewater enterprise fund. And we could certainly look at that, but I think that might be a large gap.
Oh, I'm talking, I'm talking more of the users of the airport. How was then, what was going to be served?
The users of the airport.
Hangar owners.
And they would be charged more?
No, they've been, they've been overcharged, actually. They've been overcharged.
Can you speak up, Dennis? We can't hear you.
Whether we can, I was wondering whether we had any plans to do anything about that or not, or what? Because I know personally that if I found out that somebody just pulled a number out of somewhere and was charging me in taxes and it came in a net number, came in a whole lot cheaper after appraisal, a legal appraisal, wouldn't sit well with me.
Well, we're not, we're not talking about taxes. We're talking about the wastewater enterprise fund paying for, paying the Airport Enterprise Fund for the use of the property. So the wastewater treatment plant fund had been overpaying for the airport. So essentially, the airport owes the wastewater fund for the last 20 years. Because the wastewater treatment plant, according to our appraisal, showed that the wastewater was overpaying for the land, the use of the land.
Wouldn't that reflect somewhat on the lease rate of the, the lease rate?
No, no, total separate business transactions, not at all.
Just a second. Do you have any other questions, sir?
No, no, ma'am.
All right. I need you to come up and state your name and all that stuff.
Since it seems the airport has been overpaid, maybe we could assess the pilots and the airplanes for the overpayment to the airport itself. I mean, they are the main utilizers of the airport, so maybe they should give the money back.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Kim Cummings. You say overpaid, how many years did you not pay anything? Let's make up the back years, you paid nothing for using those ponds. And your appraisal seemed awful kind of odd to me. I don't know who you got to do this appraising, but I never knew your properties would go down in value. But how many years, maybe you might know, Dennis, are those ponds being used without being paid? How long, to how long have they been existence?
Maybe the obsolescence 91 went into effect.
Was it right after the improvements that were made at the plant? So nobody is suggesting that any money changed hands?
No.
It was before, that's how we used, strictly used the pond because-
Just a second.
The ones are overflowing at the treatment land.
Right, back in the 90s.
And we were still trying to find financing to upgrade there.
Okay, Phil? Phil?
I'd have to agree with Tim, probably, I'm not sure how many years or when we decided what the airport should, or what the wastewater should pay the airport, but I don't know when that started exactly. It was about, it was when the ponds were overflowing over there, so we'd have to research the records, but rather than having, you know, we could go all night with who should pay who.
Dennis, be fair about this, you might owe the airport money.
Okay.
I think not all of us.
Thank you.
They haven't paid, was the, was the airport manager swagging?
It was long before Tom.
Well, that's when we started developing money in Cottle, developing money that would be paid for that airport. But those ponds have been existing for a long time.
Since 1994 comes back to me.
So you might sit down and do a figure here.
You'd have to go back and see if who, if there's anything out.
Good point.
Thank you.
You mind if I?
Yes.
But didn't recently-
No, I need your name and address, sorry.
Michelle Mance, city resident.
Add to the public citizen.
Yes. Didn't recently, though, that the council just wrote off a loan for one point, how much was the loan? $1.4 million that the taxpayers, the city of Tatchwe taxpayers were subsidizing the airport, $1.4 million. So I don't care how many, $50,000, $20,000 in the ponds or whatever, I think the airport should be thankful that they don't owe the residents a refund.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council? No other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the MOU.
Motion on staff's recommendation.
Moved, do I have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Shouldn't you abstain since you have a business at the airport?
That's true.
Excuse me.
That is a point of order.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a concept.
All right, I would like a comment from you, Mr. Schroeder.
As Mr. Hecky knows, when he first came on, we ran a number of these questions by the fair political practices.
Yes.
The fact that he rents a hangar, rents, owns hangers and rents them out, and they said there's not a conflict.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to know, is there going to be an issue at the FAA that we did not approve this?
Probably so.
So we'd have to send them a letter and let them know that this will be taken up in December when someone's seated as a fifth person to, of course, it could go three to two against this as well. Let the FAA know that it was two to two and what are non-decision worst tonight, and see what they say.
We'll do that.
All right.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Carl Garrett. I believe that you own a business on the airport, you rent property on the airport, your rent regarding the rental of your property, by this could have reduced or increased, could have a direct effect. And as a citizen of this town, and as your representative to me, I feel that you have to abstain on that vote, because-
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Please sit down.
Moving on, number 14, Development Services Director report?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and council members, I'm going to make this brief. This is an information only item. The state of California had developed a number of years ago, or the federal government actually did, the state of California adopted the Active Transportation Program, known as ATP as the acronym. It replaced a number of prior grant programs. This money targets non-motorized transportation, and the program is a direct result of the moving ahead for progress in the 21st century law, also known as MAP 21, authorized by the federal government. The program details goals, generally speaking, but for both infrastructure and non-infrastructure projects, but again, the focus here is on walking and biking. So tonight for you guys, I wanted to let you know that we have the fourth cycle, so grants come in cycles, that's when they announce how much money they have, and then ask eligible agencies like us if we wish to compete for some of the funding. They've announced the fourth cycle, the fourth cycle applications are due here at the end of this month, and so city staff has been preparing applications to reply to that, as we have in the past. And so, tonight is a brief presentation on our applications. The entire intent is to inform the council and inform the public. I should preface my quick presentation with the fact that we had a specific public workshop to this, and I gave this presentation last Wednesday night here, we had about 25 people show up, which was great attendance and a lot of positive comments and feedback, thank you to those who came, for your participation in that, and had some really great comments, including some that adjusted our applications as we're working on them, so it was a really good conversation. Anyway, the program offers a couple of primary advantages. One of the principal ones is that we potentially qualify for 100% grant funding, which is a very rare thing in our world, and so we have an opportunity to go grab some money to do projects here in the city, non-motorized projects, at no additional cost to the taxpayer, minus what you've already, given the federal or state government. But we figure that money's left your pocket and mine already, and so we ought to do our darndest to get as much of it back as we can. The city has also been very successful in the past in ATP grant applications, my staff report shows it, for those of you looking at it. In cycle one, we received over $2 million, in cycle two, just over $2 million, and in cycle three, almost a half million dollars in grant projects. I should note to you guys that in a number of the, in most of these cycles, almost half of the counties in the state of California receive no money. So compared to the rest of the state of California, we work hard and we, and we do well in these applications. So with that, I just want to quickly tell you about the four projects we're looking at. The first one is Tatchwe Boulevard ADA reconstruction project, ADA is the Americans with Disabilities Act. This project is targeting the south side of Tatchwe Boulevard. If you wish to get up and look at one of the televisions in the back, if it's hard for you to see these diagrams, I would encourage you to do that, but, South Side of Tatchwe Boulevard from Hayes to Snyder, we've done a lot of improvements on Tatchwe Boulevard over the last few years, some of these monies are very similar to ATP. And so, in this particular section of the road, we, we don't have adequate facilities for pedestrians, and I would note that at the corner of Tatchwe Boulevard and Snyder is the Salvation Army. So if you go to the next slide, there's a photo of the Salvation Army. These photos tell, tell the story better than I can do it, in terms of showing you why improvements to this area for pedestrians, the Salvation Army serves the underserved, and yet we don't have facilities for somebody who maybe doesn't have the physical ability to move easily on and off a sidewalk into this business, or somebody who's carrying those carts, as you can see, that may not have the strength to move them around, especially when they're full. You can also see the second photo there, maybe go one more slide ahead, thanks. You can see the quality of the facilities in the area, the power poles and the fencing, and how that prohibits people with a disability from moving freely through this area. So that's the first project. Let's go to the next one. The second project, titled the West Park Frontage Project. This is on, what's West Park, Michelle?
E.
D.
D.
Sorry, I should know this stuff. There's, I've memorized nearly all of the town's roads, so, give me a break. Anyway, right there in front of West Park, we have Little League there, and especially on Little League nights, the park gets crazy packed, and yet we don't have any pedestrian facilities in that area. So the photos show you what we do have, we have very nice green lawn, thanks to the Parks Department, but that's, that's not easy for somebody necessarily, again, with a disability, to navigate. It also isn't the safest thing in the world, as kids are kicking soccer balls, et cetera, that's the kind of stuff that contributes to accidents. So that's, this project is to improve that frontage all through the area and connect to sidewalk on either side of that, so as people park out there and utilize the park, this is easy to access location. Let's go to the next one. The third project is the Dennison Road Gap Closure Project. We, as you might recall, we did have an ATP project that we completed last year to build some sidewalk on Dennison Road to connect Anita to, pardon me, Valley Boulevard, the high school to the junior high. We also have an ATP project going to construction within about the next six months, where we're going to improve the rail crossing at Dennison, so that that neighborhood there in Ashtrak, and the neighborhood where you live, Ms. Fox, can, can potentially walk to junior high. This, or, this is a missing gap, let's go to the next photo, it's hard to see, but there's a small section there where there's a trailer park close to Tatchwe Boulevard, where on one side of the road, the road narrows due to the trailer park with no pedestrian walking area, and on the other side, it's dirt still with no pedestrian walking area. So we'd like to close this gap by filling this small area in, and that's what this project proposes. The fourth project, go ahead, is, is the largest of the four, is what we're titling the Safe Routes to School, that's what that acronym means, Snyder Avenue Gap Closure Project. So as everyone knows, the high school is very close to Snyder and Valley, which is at the left end of the, of the diagram there, and then the junior high is all through the middle of the diagram there, on the east side of Snyder from Tatchwe Boulevard all the way up to, gosh, what is that, B or C? Anita, I'm sorry. Anyway, so let's go one slide forward, there are a couple of photos of the west side of the road and the condition of the facilities that, that our kids use to go to and from school, let's go one more head. And then that's photos of that area as it connects to Valley. Anyway, the intent there is to close in all of those gaps, all along Snyder, so that we have continuous route for kids who live in the neighborhoods, particularly to the west of the school, to move from the west towards the school, walking or riding a bike, and then they can stay on the sidewalk, you know, parents who are dropping off kids have a place where they can pull off out of traffic and discharge their kids onto a sidewalk. The school district already has crossing guards in this area, and so we would work with them to make sure that we position them in an intelligent way to make this work. So, those are the four projects we're presenting to you all, you can contact my office if you have any interest in them, at the city's number, otherwise, we certainly appreciate your all's support and, and feedback, both in and out of the cycles, if you guys are noticing places where, again, we can make, at least for this funding source, non-motorized transit improvements, specifically biking and walking, we're always interested in knowing where you guys are moving around and where you see deficiencies. So with that, that's my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you. Any questions? This is an information only item, but, yes, sir?
My name is James Roberts, I live in the city, and I was curious, is any of this free money, is this free money, correct?
There's no such thing as free money, you pay your taxes and so on, but none of this is-
The city doesn't have to probably 10% of any of these monies.
No. We are applying for these at 100% grant. It depends on how they award them back to us. In the past-
So my question is-
Yeah.
Is any of this money available for fixing the existing sidewalks in this city? There's a sidewalk going Little Ways, and it stops and it's dirt. And Little Ways farther stops in dirt. You go Little Ways farther, and there's spalling concrete, there's crumbled concrete sidewalks, you have to be very careful walking along to keep them, tripping yourself. To me, the priority of that, if you have this money available, is to fix the current pathways for wheelchair, walking, bicycle, or whatever, before you start to build a project. Could that be conceivable?
Uh, no, they would not fund that project, 100%.
Does it not, does it not comply with ADA, the ADA requirements?
Both complies with ADA, but it doesn't comply with their grant application rules. They, they have the money, they have your money, they hold that money, and they choose how to give it out, and they tell you all the rules, I'm telling you 100%, they will not fund a maintenance project.
In other words, use that money to fix current problems?
Correct, they will not.
It seems to me, as I look about, seems like the streets are getting narrower and the bicycle paths are getting wider.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just a comment, just to thank Jay for his, and staff for going after these grants. They, they come through Kern Cog that I- As you know, I sit on Kern Cog, that administers all of this money, and it's, it's a lot of competition around the state, and our executive director, Aaron Akimi, and the board down there, and the staff, has really been going after money, that if cities don't have a project, and we do, and we've got one on the shelf ready to go, anytime there's extra money out there, we go after it. And like you said, we're going after 100% financing or grant money, and I tell you, every April, I write a big check, I used to give money back when I had five kids and I had deductions. I don't anymore. So I pay, and I pay, and I pay, and I know all of you pay. And then we have to beg the state and federal government, can we have some money that you're granting everyone in the state, can we have a piece of it back? So thank you for giving some money back, that we've already paid. So, anyway, thanks very much.
Thank you. All right. Police Chief report, do you want to take these separately or together?
We're going to take them separately.
All right.
And Officer Price will do the presentation for both. The first abatement for 122 Chaperone, the lead to reschedule for two weeks. Unfortunately, the municipal code has very strict requirement for noticing on this, sort of an abatement. This was originally scheduled for council meeting previous to this one, but we did not have a quorum. So this week, we will be doing a reposting and recertified mail, so that we can legally proceed with that at the next scheduled council meeting.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to reschedule, Mr. Schroeder?
We can just put it on the next agenda.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. On to the abatement of 1004 Chris Lane. Honorable mayor and council members. Pursuant to Tatchwe Municipal Code, emergency abatements may be conducted by the city when deemed appropriate. The code also requires a hearing in front of council to determine whether or not the abatement and the code enforcement officers' abatement actions were appropriate. On June 25th, 2018, property located at 1004 Chris Lane was inspected based on a complaint of drive overgrown weeds in the front yard. During the inspection of the property, was found to be vacant, with two broken windows which allowed illegal entry into the property. Notice of violation was posted on the property with a copybook mailed from the legal owner of the property. However, the property owner is deceased, and her son, the former occupant, is currently incarcerated or maintaining this property as a drug house. Due to the property having no reasonable party, or no responsible party capable of directing the violations, an abatement warrant was obtained from the current county Superior Court in order to evade evictions. On June 27th, the abatement warrant was served on the property, due to the use of private contractor, all trash debris, dead and overgrown vegetation was removed from property. Broken windows on the structure in addition to those that were likely to be broken in future trespassing incidents, was secured using a shatter resistant clear polycarbonate meant to simulate the appearance of normal windows and therefore reduce the lighted appearance of this property. I suppose somewhat demonstrating the polycarbonate that was placed on there. The staff's recommendation, this is the council's two emergency abatement actions conducted by code enforcement, I wonder if they might have to answer any questions you have.
Okay, any questions from the audience? Council?
Just a comment, thank you for what you do, from talking to the residents nearby, they are very pleased when you take your actions to abate these residents, they're an eyesore in the neighborhood, and, believe me, they are very appreciative, so thank you.
I appreciate that, sir.
And I would, I would like to mirror that also, Officer Price, that, that service that you provide, I mean, you are in a lot of cases considered a bad guy. You know, it's a very, very unpopular position and task that we undertake, that you undertake. There are citizens in our community that have no other option than to come into, coming to you and the chief, and it really saves their neighborhood by minimizing, eliminating these problems. So, like Mr. Smith said, thank you for what you do, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, so, we need to approve the emergency abatement actions at 1004 Chris Lane. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Let the record show it was a four zero vote. Thank you, sir. City attorneys report.
This is just a, bringing back for further direction, the Amicus jointure you wanted to do for SB 54, SB AB 103 and AB 450. Hearings have been held since our last meeting. The federal government's preliminary injunction, request for preliminary injunction against the state enforcing those laws was generally denied, except for one portion of AB 450, which relates, and it's in your agenda, which relates to employers voluntarily letting ICE into their business- into their businesses to inspect employees. The state's motion to dismiss the federal government's lawsuit was generally approved, except for that portion of AB 5450, which allowed ICE to come into employers, employment locations at the employer's agreement voluntarily to inspect records and to deal with check verifications of employee status. There's going to be an appeal on both of those at some point. The question is, if we don't have enough time to bring it back to you to determine which one of the amicus briefs you want to join as a safety valve, can you give the city manager the authority to decide?
Okay.
Otherwise, we may miss the ability to join. If the appeal comes quickly enough, the court doesn't give direction on how amicus briefs get filed until the last minute, then we wouldn't know what to join, unless the city manager had the authority to select. That would only be if we don't have time to bring it back.
Right. Okay. Any questions from the audience concerning this? Yes, sir?
My name's Jim Pendleton, I live over here in Golden Hills, I also run a business here in town. And the one question I have, a lot of power that we're giving an individual here, is he still going to adhere to what the city itself said, where we don't want this place to be a sanctuary city, where we want to follow the law of the land instead of sitting there refuting it the way some of the cities in the state have done? And is there any way possible, if you're going to do it, to actually have it all set up in place, where we're going to join, all we've got to do is submit the paperwork without having to sit there and go through a lengthy process where we could end up missing out on it?
The answer to your first question is yes, we'll have to go by what the council has previously approved, no sanctuary city.
Okay.
Just deciding which one of the five or six amicus briefs that will probably be filed to join, which one he feels is most like what the council is directing.
And it's not going to be done in the back end. We have a legal team that we fire. Oh, Mr. Schroeder's our city attorney, but we have a legal team on payroll that has already been directed by council.
Also, will we be able to get the paperwork already initiated, have it in place prior to, or we got to wait for the minimum?
That's the plan, but we don't know what the court's schedule is going to be for filing amicus briefs. That's the only reason to ask for a safety valve in the event it comes up too quickly and we can't get it back for the council action.
And this was suggested by the legal team.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I understood from some of the-
I need your name.
Yeah, I'm Charles White, city of Tatchby. I understood from some of the rhetoric I heard coming out of Bakersfield, that there were going to be a lot of people here tonight from other areas demanding that the city council declare Tehachapi a law and order city. They're seeking a solution for a problem that I don't think exists. Tehachapi is known throughout all of Kern County as a safe and peaceful place for people to live. When the officers of the Tatchby Police Department make arrests, the perpetrators are taken to the sheriff's office in Bakersfield to be booked. At that point, the sheriff is responsible for dealing with reporting or not reporting the crime to federal authorities. The Tatchby Police Department keeps a handle on crime in Tehachapi, and over the past two years, Tehachapi has had a decrease in crime. We have a low crime rate, and mostly not related to the immigrant population. In 2017, Kern County Sheriff Youngblood requested that the Kern County Board of Supervisors designate Kern County as a law and order county. The supervisors declined to do so. In March of 2017, Youngblood acknowledged in the LA Times that his law and order measure would have little effect if California Sanctuary State Bill were to pass in the State House, which it did. He told the LA Times at that time that the move was somewhat symbolic. Tehachapi does not need to pass a symbolic resolution, just as Kern County chose not to. The symbolic things the city accomplishes are things like working with nonprofits such as the senior center, the community theater, the museums, the Economic Development Council, the Chamber of Commerce, civic organizations, in order to accomplish things that our community are just, just can't do on the city's limited budget. They need the participation of the community. These symbolic actions on the part of the city are emblematic of what makes our community Other communities look with respect to Tehachapi as a well-run city. We always have a balanced budget, and while we have our differences, on city council, there has always been a balance between local conservatives and the more progressive communities. There are strong local voices at city council, as we heard tonight, on both sides of every issue. There's also a wide difference of opinion from council members, and that leads to lively debate. We want local control, and others in the audience tonight, or others who are interested, have different opinions, let them go back to their communities and their jurisdictions and try to make changes, not here, not in our community. We take care of ourselves, let them do the same where they live. SB 54 has absolutely no effect on crime in Tehachapi or the way those who are arrested are treated on a local level. All criminals are treated the same on the local level. It is up to the sheriff's department to comply with SB 54, not local law enforcement. Whether one agrees or disagrees with SB 54, I don't think our local tax dollars should be spent on legal fees to support or to fight against it. The dollar spent will be a waste of time, waste of effort, and have absolutely no effect on Tehachapi and its residents. And I do understand that that was a decision that was made previously and probably can't be reversed, but I know that's the feeling of a lot of people in Tehachapi. We don't need this, and we want our local control.
Thank you.
Michael Bigley, I think his rebuttal should have been given at the meeting where we actually had the vote, but when this thing, SB 54, comes up, can't you call a special meeting for the council members to make that vote?
We could, but you're always running up against whether you can get a quorum on any particular day, and it's, you've got to get an agenda posted, and you've got to get it put out. If there's any way we can do it, we will. I'm just afraid we're going to run into a situation where the judge sets the timetable, and it's too quick for us to be able to read through those amicus briefs and bring them to the council and decide which one to join. Now, if it's possible, we'll do it. That's what we want to do. We want to bring it to the council, but I don't want them to miss it either.
I think they should just leave it with the council and not let one person do it. I think if you can put a budget out on Thursday and expect to vote it on Monday, you can call a special meeting together and-
That's the direction I'm looking for, one way or the other.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Council?
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Barbara Reynolds, Tehachapi resident, 45 years, and owner of Tehachapi Court Services for 26 years. I am delighted to hear from the city attorney that the city manager has a legal staff in place, so that if that timeline is too short, we certainly can address it at that time. But from a literal reading of the minutes, I was concerned, and shouldn't have been, because Greg has many expertise, but it is not legal, and I should have known that there was, in fact, a legal team in place, and I'm glad to hear that, city manager and city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cora Schmidt, I live in the city, and I am against spending any city money on this little letter to the courts, because, for one thing, the federal government has made such a mess of the whole thing, and I feel that anything that the immigration department has jurisdiction over, they ought to, federal government, all 50 states, need to be responsible for it. I do not want our taxes increased because they just give it over to the states. For one thing, this whole thing is against the 10th Amendment, and it's, you just cannot commandeer private, well, not private, I mean, public, state, state officers to do your work for you. You have to have a plan to do your own work and pay for it yourself. So this is a problem that should be paid by 50 states. That's what we're going to do, 50 states have to pay. It should not be the border states that are meant holding the bag, and that's, whether it's 5,000, whether it's 35,000, I'm against it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Council?
I have a comment. I think, I think that us having a legal team behind us is fine. It makes me, it would make me personally feel better to know that what our options can be and where that letter can go beforehand, so we can jump right on it. Even if we can't, even if we can't drum up a special meeting, then at least, at least we'll have two weeks for that letter to go somewhere. And it would be, it would be the council that decides who gets the, who gets the letter. And no disrespect to you.
Oh, listen, this, I mean, you, this body-
I'm not going to let you fix my car.
Yeah. No, no, no. This body voted to go down this road. Our legal team suggested this. If you don't want to do it, or you choose to do it, I'm fine, either way, you make the direction.
The chances are we'll have time to bring it back, but that's just in case we don't- Yeah, I just want, I just want to make sure that we're covered, and I just want to make sure that the people that are most familiar with this are, because I'm Mr. Cora. I don't want to see our money go down the drain either. And that's the way.
Anyone else?
Ms. Mayor, I have one question for Mr. Schroeder. Who have we retained as a law firm to?
Richards, Watson, and Gershon.
Okay, thanks.
Peter Pierce for that firm, who's their appellate specialist, is the one that's in charge of advising us when those amicus briefs are due, and he'll get us copies of them as they file, and we'll bring them here just as quickly as we can.
Great.
You can select.
Okay, thank you, that's my, that's my only question, Ms. Mayor.
I think we should have the council decide, rather than, this puts a lot of pressure, and it puts it all on city manager. If it goes sideways and someone disagrees with which brief here, which one he chooses, he's going to get slammed. If he chooses the right one, he's going to get slammed, either way. So I wouldn't, I don't think we should put him in that position. Let's just bring it back to the council as soon as you can. That's my, I go with Dennis, we should all bring it back to full council. So you could do no action, take no action?
All right. Unless someone has a motion to make, then we will take no action.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we table this, and we keep, we keep, we keep the information pipeline flowing, so that we can act when we need to act, with appropriate people acting.
I'll second your motion, Dennis.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Thank you. Council member reports. Dennis?
Did they mention the city attorney's lead of city conference?
It was on the consent.
It was on the consent. Dennis, do you have anything?
I missed the last two meetings, it was an emergency, and I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
I had Barbara notice Ashley as soon as possible.
I have nothing, Ms. Mayor.
At our last Kern Council of Governments meeting, we had a report. I just want to invite people to go to the Kern Council of Governments website. Our region is going to be receiving, I think, over $700 million over the next so many years, much more than we would have without SB 1. So SB 1 funding is being kind to our region, and we've got a lot of projects in the mill, too many to try to detail here, but if you go to Kern Council of Governments website and look at the projects that are in progress, it'll, it'll tell you what's going on. And there's finally some movement. I've been on there for, I forget how many years, and every six months, I ask, when are they ever going to get a study at least for truck climbing lanes from Bakersfield, from General Deal up to wherever we can get? So I'm just happy to announce that I think there's a project study report finally getting off the ground, where they're getting some different funding from somewhere else within the Caltrans Air Department to at least support a study. You've got to have that first thing before you can even consider where you're going to get funding, how much it's going to cost, so that's on the website as well. So they're tired of me asking for truck climbing lanes, but if I have any more time to be on there to do that, I will continue to ask, so anyway. As you're coming up from Bakersfield and you get stuck by a truck coming out in front of you, say Phil, get that going. All right.
I am, I just want to make one comment, which probably won't be that popular, but I graduated junior high in 1962. That way you all know how old I am. I resent the fact that I'm being made to feel like I'm in junior high now. We spent two meetings where we didn't have a quorum, Mr. Wastrom apologized, thank you. We couldn't do anything. Now, tonight, we have four people here, and we still can't do much of anything. I have no idea what anybody, why, or what, or whatever, but I want to know if there's anything that we can do to conduct the business of the people when we can't get a majority.
I'll investigate it.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we're going to go into closed session. If any decisions are made in there, we will come back here and vote on it, the attorney will tell you what the vote was. Thank you.